Thank you. All right. Well, why don't we, we have a quorum now. So why don't we, I'll call this meeting to order. At 7:03 PM with Matt Francisco and Sue Meyer and Lara Shaheb Eldon. And Jack Goldstein in the chair. I'd like to welcome tonight, Michael Frescarelli. Who is an attorney. With John and John, John's firm and John first cannot be with us tonight. He's away. So Michael is sitting in to try and. Give us what advice he can and but also to take back to John as. As timely way as possible, what? Goes on this evening here so that we can move forward quickly when John gets back, which I believe is Monday, right?
I understand. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we're expecting, I assume, Matt Moran and perhaps Steve Barshaw. But let's just begin the meeting with the chairman's comments. Did any of you have a chance to? Sit in on the. Trustees meeting regarding dockside last Wednesday. You did?
Yes.
I don't know. Did, did you have any takeaways from it that you want to share soon?
Well, it's, it's already decided, whatever. I think it's, it's a, it's a done thing. I actually went to see the. Construction thing. Actually, I think it looks pretty good, or at least it's a, it's a lot of improvement. Than what we have now. The only concern, I think lots of people expressed at that time is traffic. At the corner there if they're gonna get. Whatever things, yeah, and so on and so forth. And it is a very narrow entrance. And. You know, safety apparently is, is a big issue. That's, that's my, that's my observation over there because we go over there quite often. And but I think once it's done, it's gonna, it's gonna be a big improvement. That's, that's my feeling.
So thank you. Matt, did it ever come to the planning board when, when, were you? It would have been under your chairmanship.
No, they, they're not required to get a, they're the state.
Right.
And it's state lands and they're doing, you know, a major kind of, you know, proof of concept. To kind of show that they can hope, in hopes to stabilize a shoreline. So the village has a, you know, a, I guess it's like a management. Right to the park, you know, the state will continue to own the park and that runs out in a bit, but. Yeah, no, it wouldn't have come through the planning board. They don't, they're not required to get a permit.
So, so you weren't. No information was sought regarding the terms of that contract that was signed in 2018? Eighteen.
You mean the villages?
The contract.
Agreement with the state to manage the park?
Well, yes, and well, it, it had, it's quite a broad agreement, but it's basically a management of the, of the. When the village becomes the less see of the park, basically for a period of 10 years.
Right.
So that did not.
No, that would be an executive legislative action. It wouldn't really come to the planning board.
Okay, so. Okay. Well, I was, I was less, I guess. Confident. That this thing has been done correctly and. I'm not sure that it's just a done deal at this point. I was surprised, number one, that. Linda Cooper, who was the regional director of the Department of Parks for the Hudson Valley. Stated that the design of the park was in response to public input. But as the conversation went deeper, the public input was a meeting or two in 2013. And certainly the public that may have spoken to the idea back then is. Far away from the public that currently I think typifies. Cold Spring 10 years later. Secondly, there were statements made such as all they were doing was for, into this just an example. Replacing an existing boat ramp with a new boat ramp. That would not therefore profoundly affect traffic through the park. But that boat ramp has not been usable for 20 years or more, much less visible. Or visible, much less usable for 20 years or more. And so it struck me that it could hardly. Be used as the term existing in regard to its impact on traffic in the park was. Questionable. And number three, that as Sue mentioned, the design of the park, including the boat ramp. Which has a. A walk, the road that goes in will be made permanent and accessible. But. That no provision has been made for the cars that will be offloading there. It's all rooftop vehicles, water vehicles. And. And no apparent coordination took place with the. Villages proposed parking. You know, plan, nor did it confront the. Sort of crisis situation that we face during certain times of the year with parking. So from a planning perspective, I think it has not been well done. I, no one, I believe, objective, certainly I. Am in full support of stabilizing the. Shoreline. Because I believe in the science of. Climate change. But there's much more going on here and. I believe that the connection between this project and phase one of the fjord trail has not been examined. Either, which. The fjord trail now has been determined to have potential negative impact on the village. In the 2015 draft environmental impact assessment. So I'm. I am interested in seeing whether any of those issues. Can be at least aired further because I think that there is a precedent being set here. In terms of process and in terms of plant, of big planning issues.
Jack?
Yeah.
Are. Are you approaching this from the planning board point of view or from the general environmental protection? Or improvement point of view? This is, you know, I have no background information regarding this because in. Two oh one three or not even in cold spring yet. And two oh eighteen, you know, we did not hear anything about this. This is the first time I heard about it. But we go to the park very often. What Matt says, if we have no. Power in, in.
Legal standing.
Yeah. What, what, what can we do? I don't know if we can. Change the plan, but we certainly can raise the issue about parking. However, if I understood correctly. No vehicles are allowed to get into the park if it is correct. But when you say boat dock. We looked and, and my first reaction is what kind of boat? If it's a canoe, it's good, almost, I would say about. Eight minutes walk from the entrance to the, to the launch point. And if you carry a canoe, it's not an easy walk just to go through there. It's. So. The dock location itself is way at the end, but based on what I saw, they already sent the. Big. Tube type of thing in there to anchor the, the launch pad, I think. I think there's a, there's a tube and then they, they get the cement in there. So that's the anchor. That's what I saw. So from that point of view, I think whatever they had in mind, they already started. That's why I, I said it's pretty much done as far as the design and. At least the, what the plan is.
Well, my other concern, my concern is if it's, if it's procedurally not, not a type of project that falls under our purview. Or that comes before us. Yeah. Is it really our purview to review it or even, you know, it's, it's obviously, it's, it can be. You know, it's, it's a project that. Is of interest to our community, but perhaps it's not, as Matt was explaining earlier, maybe it was not. You know, this type of project because of the designation and the state. Yeah, the state designations, it just doesn't come before the planning board. So I don't know if it makes sense to. I mean, we can always offer our opinion as individuals, I guess, and community members to the trustees or to the village board. But I don't know if it doesn't make sense to have a statement as a planning board. I mean, I, maybe I'm not sure.
As I mentioned, I think my first meeting, we are in fact empowered to look into anything we wish to look into. That doesn't mean necessarily that every, that. Parks is responsible to come before us with an application for comments by the. By the planning board, but we are absolutely empowered to look at any issue that's going to have a major impact on planning. And basically the life development in the district.
I'm sorry, look at, look at and do what? I mean, the planning board, the planning board responds to referrals from the code enforcement officer. And applies the code. We're not, in my opinion, we're not supposed to be out looking for work. Or even looking for problems. But I guess what you're saying, you're, you're saying article 21 or?
I'm saying that if you look at what our responsibilities are. They are, in fact, we are responding to applications, but we are not limited to that. And so we can investigate, which is the term that's used in the code. Anything we wish to, if only to air the issues. If they potentially are going to have a significant impact on development in the village. And so what our role could be here, and I'm not saying it should be, I'm just saying could be here, is to, in fact, look at how this was. Developed and what the impact is going to be both environmentally and in terms of tourism. So it is appropriate if we decide to do it, whether we want to decide to do it or not is, is another question. The. Going back to your comment, Sue, about the parking, what Linda Cooper said was that there would not be a parking lot. In, in the park at the end of the road where the boat ramp was. But that there would be access to the boat ramp.
Is that, and is that confirmed though? I don't even think the easement allows that.
I thought, I thought they said it's only. By foot. It's.
I thought, yeah, I thought the Bergman, I thought the Bergman isn't, did not offer vehicular access.
I believe, well, it offered some because that's where the maintenance trucks go and the like.
So, but maintenance access is very different than.
Yeah, yeah.
But what? Especially, especially in an easement, right?
Okay, but let me finish. What Linda Cooper said was that if the traffic to the boat ramp becomes hazardous. To, because there are obviously kids playing there as well, that they would consider putting ballards up. At the entrance to the park and. I'm just, I'm just repeating it, okay? And that people who wish to offload their craft from the roofs of the cars. Would walk in from there to the boat ramp, which as you say, is a eight to 10 minute walk. But no, even in that circumstance, no planning has been made. To deal with the fact that if four cars are offloading there at that intersection, that dead end there. What that does to North Street or West Street? And then what happens to the cars afterward?
But that, but is that a change from its current situation? Like, are you talking about? Because is the project, I'm sorry, I might not be as familiar with the full extent of the project, but if, if the, if the project is me, is mainly about stabilization and repair. Then the use of the, of that area is going to still be consistent after the stabilization project. So the parking situation is, is sort of status quo, not necessarily, okay?
Not necessarily, Lara. And for one thing, it's, while it is described as being largely about stabilization and repair of the shoreline. If you look at the plans. It extends to the entire park area, including what they're saying is the replacement of an existing boat ramp. Which does not exist and therefore has not been a draw to traffic and. Again, it's the kind of. Government speak that. I find objectionable, whether I find it objectionable as the chair of this board or just as a person remains to be seen. But also, you know, in 2018, a contract was signed in which the village takes on. The liability, the insurance liability for the park for the next 10 years. It takes on the full cost of maintenance of the park for the next 10 years. Except in cases of, you know, a force majeure, then there's a negotiation that takes place if the damage is significant. And there's a paragraph in that contract, and this is a public document. There's a paragraph in there in which the parks department says, we will be undertaking a shoreline stabilization program. We can't tell you what that will entail. But you will be responsible for it. And we are only obligated to give you 48 hours notice before we begin, which is what happened. And so. Aside from the very peculiar circumstances of that contract or clauses of that contract. You also have a situation where clearly this design is not coming from public input in 2013 if there was no design in 2018. So. Again, I'm sharing this with you. For you to think about, okay? I've already. That machine that shows the tube going into the, I think, Larry, you mentioned it. I don't know what that is because there's a floating boom there, containment boom. The boat ramp is supposed to be further. East along the coast.
There could be just pilings as part of the stabilization, right?
Well, it could be, but I, but there's, it's, go take a look, Matt. You would recognize what, there's a sealed. Obviously pumping container with various hoses coming out of it, some flat, some round. Some going into the, this PCP, it's about a two and a half diameter PCP tube.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
And so they're pumping out to do, to do piles or to?
It's unclear. That's what I'm thinking. No one knows. And the village doesn't know what the purpose of that.
Have you ever looked at the observation deck?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Before they built the deck. They had a platform and then they had these tubes. I called it tubes. It's actually, you know, a tube. And then they pumped cement in there. That apparently is an anchor. And it has different things in there. So the deck is built on those things. So they, they are the basis. Based on what I could see in the water there because, you know, they, they had a circle, they, they. Block the water. So from what I could see, it's the same anchor as the observation deck. So I think what they're doing is they are putting in things instead of using the wood post, they are now using cement. But it's a tube type of thing. And then whatever structure they have would be built. Would be anchored on top of that. That's how I felt. I, I don't know. I didn't ask because there was only one woman trying to fix the fence. You know, we didn't be engaged into any conversation, but that's, that's how I felt.
Well, it, it could be used for that. I think, but I'm not an expert in that. But Matt, if you have a chance, because there's nothing on the plans that would indicate the structure where it is.
No, I think, no, I'll take a look. I guess, I mean, my. I think it's important to figure out whether or not, like, like you had said yourself, which is, was very forthright to say, you know, is your reaction personal or as the chair? I think that that's important to kind of filter out on your own. We have historically kind of operated with, you know, what is brought before us, but. You know, I haven't, I'm not familiar with the, with the code reference that you're saying that, you know, investigative studies. I'll take another look at chapter. Twenty one, there were quite a few changes to it. So it could be something that was, that was added in the last adoption. There were quite a few. CMR changes to 111 and 21. Part of the reason why all my back and forth emails, because you guys all know I am incredibly pedantic. When it comes to code, because it's really the only way to be, you know, which is because, you know, that's the only thing that survives today is the code. And there were quite a few new insertions. One of them I wasn't even aware of. So it, you know, kind of took me by surprise. Which will, you know, we'll, we'll, we can talk offline and then, but yeah, no, I think I'll take a look, but it does sound like piling foundations.
Again, if you could take a look and then. If you have the time to take a look at the plan, which is also posted at the village.
On the website?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. It's under shoreline stabilization project.
But, but Mike, while we have you here, I mean, does the village have any authority to say, you know, let us look under the hood? I mean, I've dealt with the state and the state decides what they feel like doing and what they don't, right?
Usually, I did find a code provision that referring to about the. Planning board now being empowered to undertake its own investigations report to the village board.
Oh, is that, was that a change?
Looks like it was added over the summer, July 20th, 21.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I, yeah, I, that was not my add.
In terms of what the planning board may be able to recommend to the village board, the village board may be able to.
Okay.
With respect to the state, that's a, that is a.
Yeah, good luck.
Well, all I'm saying is that I think it, I mean, I will tell you. One of my sort of decisions about taking this on. Because it wasn't a good time for me to do it was in fact, our, this responsibility, you know, this. You know, this. Charge of the planning board because I think we're at.
I'm sorry, the investigative studies?
Yeah, because I think we're at a key moment.
I think that might have been Robert Moses's too.
No.
Good.
He wouldn't have let anyone else. I think we're at a key moment in the life of the village in terms of how we handle development.
Development, yeah.
Yeah. And.
I would, I would agree. I would agree. If not past it, yes.
Yeah, but I. I think at least from my perspective, I see our being justified in airing these issues. I don't know whether we can actually, you know, result in a course correction on the design or not. But I do think there has to be a new way, a new partnership where these large impact projects are decided. So anyway. For, for more discussion and I appreciate you're giving me this much time. So without objection, let's move on to approval of the minutes. I believe we have the correct formula here. To approve the January 27th minutes. And so may I have a resolution, please, to approve the minutes?
Yes.
All right, Sue, thank you. Was that a yes?
Yes.
Can I have, can I have a second? May I have a second, please?
Seconded.
Thanks, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. So thank you for that. Any reports from the members from you all?
Um, it's not. Report. It, I walked through. Butterfield place and just have a look because looking at the drawings, I really could not figure out. Or I was asking myself where exactly the building is and. I went through there. Apparently one place is fenced up. And with the big advertisement say, office space coming soon or something. And I assume that.
You found, you found it then.
That's it, right? However. Um, the, the space looked quite small, but you know, for one building. And then it has two huge trees in there. Would the village tree community have a problem with those trees? Or they were already?
There's no, they have no privy over trees on private land.
No? Okay. Okay. And then looking at that, that's about this far away from the traffic from the road. It really is just.
Well, the, the design of that was, you know, that it was kind of this village, you know, where there's interaction between the building and the street. It always seemed very odd to me, you know, because it just doesn't feel like somebody's going over there. As a tourist to be on the old main street. I, but. Part of it too was they wanted it, they wanted it fronted there also too, because that was going to house the senior center. And there was the idea that people would cross the street, although I think I mentioned the game Frogger. Without a traffic light, you know, that they would just cross and be able to walk over, which is great in theory, if you then would put a traffic light in and across walk and. And make it very safe. But that, that was part of the design too, is that. It, as you can see, it has that circular drive around it. So the buses could come in, drop off and come back out. Now they have to kind of back in and. It's a little bit more congested on the other side, but because of the landlord's rental agreements, things got kind of moved around. So. But yeah, that was the idea, similar to building number two, where it fronts to the street. The planning board at the time kind of liked the idea of this interaction between the street and the building and. And unfortunately, the Butterfield Square, which is our mistake, you know, the square over by the, you know, by the. And unfortunately, the Butterfield Square, which is our mistake, you know, the square over by the, you know, by the, by the, by, by the drug, by drug world. That was actually supposed, the first floor was supposed to be retail, but the building inspector allowed, you know, a change of, you know, allowed a change of use to go through without referring it over. And it became medical. They just expanded down to that floor. And the unfortunate part about that is then they just kind of wiped it out the windows because they didn't want windows because it wasn't retail. So over there, what's supposed to be happening and hopefully we get it right this time, I think with Charlotte, we will, is that. There's supposed to be interaction within the, you know, the building in the street, or at least appear that way, right? We kind of ended up on the wrong side of that, in my opinion.
I think it was classic street rail, uh, street level continuity retail.
Yeah.
And it was supposed to be a swath of it that somehow, you know.
Invited, invited people in. Yeah.
Or reference across the street, you know, it's.
That I think, that I think would have made sense with, you know, if they were a crosswalk and a traffic light, which they never, nobody ever wanted to put in. So I don't know how in the world you would even want people to cross there.
I don't.
Exactly.
I think it was an academic.
Yeah. And another, another thing I, if, if I were, um, let's say. Going to rent a senior apartment there. It's the, the trucks drive through right on your head. I mean, who's gonna rent?
Okay, well, well, Sue, let's, let's, that, that's legitimately. A conversation to be had under our discussions of.
Okay. But that's my, that's my observation. I don't have a report, but that's, I went through there.
Your report belongs there. Your observation belongs under Butterfield, okay? So let's move on to Butterfield. Jeff, do we have anyone from Butterfield on the call?
No. No, no one's joined.
Well. That's all.
Less.
Well, maybe they were just waiting for the public hearing thing or what?
Matt, Miranda, are you on? There's, I do notice there's a nine one four phone number.
No?
I guess not.
Okay, well, as of the last meeting, we were. And subsequent conversations that have taken place, we were. Supposed to establish a radius. For the notification list of, for the public hearing. And I believe we were supposed to have a resolution naming us. State agency for purposes of secret. John wasn't able to get us that resolution for tonight. And. Do we want to move ahead and establish the radius? Without having. The Butterfield reps here, so.
Well, if you, if we don't, then we have to move the public hearing because there has to be 10 days in advance of the public.
Okay. All right. So we have the.
And I would, and also too, Jack, it wouldn't be a radius. I think where we, you know, and I apologize, there was a lot of words. I think, you know, Sue and Lara are used to my words. But just that. The way the code was written, and I think there are still some open issues. John had said, we basically go back to our past practice, right? Which is that there is no radius. So what the planning board has always done. Is done kind of this adjacency, you know, two to the left, two to the right, take the same width, go across the street. That makes John.
To what?
Two properties to the left, two properties to the right, then take the same, most of our applications are coming in on Main Street. Which is another code discussion that we'll need to have because with the changes that were inserted in there. Yeah. You have to take a, a three hundred foot measure from every boundary and notify every property of the B one. Because that three hundred foot measure was inserted by John for subdivision, right? And the B one site plan review follows the village law subdivision. So we'll have to make sure that we pay attention to chapter one thirty four to fix that. We can't possibly ask. Main Street applications to go three hundred feet from every perimeter of their. They'd be coming in with, you know, with a wheelbarrow for the green cars. You know. You know, so it makes sense on a subdivision because subdivisions are very impactful, right? And, and it's a big project, but anyway, so we should put a pin in that, but. In this case, it's, it's really just what adjacencies. We don't have defined hearing procedures. That makes John very nervous, right? Why? I don't, I don't really share that, you know, that I, I think as long as you're consistent. I may be completely wrong and we, you know. But. He did say that there are no hearings defined under a village, under New York State Village Law as well. And we certainly know that ours aren't in there. So what we have always done is, you know, a few this way, a few that way. Because the vast majority of our applications are on, are on Main Street, right?
Matt, if I remember correctly, the. Constitution property at the end, when they were doing their road or. There's something, we had to notify a lot of people, including the condo people and the.
Well, good, yeah, yeah. And, and again, what the code says, and even on the subdivision, if this thing does takeovers, is additionally anybody that the planning board deans affected by the, by the action. And when, and, and I think that was me who actually made that suggestion to say, listen. The lights and the noise are really the whole length of Constitution Drive, right? Because the property is such a large property. You know, that whatever they decide to do on the property, they're within their rights to do it. But if they want to set up, you know. I, you know, a badminton net right along the boundary, which, you know, is on Constitution Drives, backyards. Those people need to come to the hearing and be heard, right? That's, that's the best we can do is really. These notifications are just to get folks in and get neighbors talking. You know, and I think, and I think we saw that play out pretty well on Constitution Drive, you know, I'm worried about headlights, I'm worried about this. And people are heard and that, you know, and the, and we come up with, you know, the mitigating things that we can. But I think the, I think the most power, the most impactful thing is people being heard, right? And, you know, and neighbors talking to each other. So that's the whole point of notification. I think with notification, I personally and professionally believe you err on the side of caution. And get as many people in to the hearing or at least notified. One of the, one of the major lawsuits that we had that just would not end and keep getting appealed was because they felt they didn't have sufficient notice, right?
No, I understand, but what does that equal?
So, so for. Yeah.
There's no, there's no set, yeah, there's no prescribed process.
There, um, the senior homes right directly across the street. Should they be notified? Should they come in?
Well, you know, much to, much to John Chagrin, it's, it's a subjective, you know, it's a subjective analysis. So we, we would say, are they impacted? I mean, with respect to this, I mean, do we feel that their impact is diff, that building is going up? The building is approved, the building is approved for commercial office space, right? Do we feel there's any additional information or anything that we need? I will, I will tell you, one of the reasons why, for the first one, why I said, we really should not have a public hearing, right? When the medical use moved from Leahy to building number two. The problem with notification too is that. People believe that, you know, that they can, that they can influence the process, right? Much like the, the shoreline stabilization. To give people, you know, the, the false, you know, perception that they can come in and make changes is not really helping, I don't think. Right? So I, I think that, you know, notifying folks. In that case, it was really only Butterfield to notice, right? Because Butterfield was the only one on the site, the condos hadn't been built. So you're, you're notifying a landlord. About uses of his, you know, of his rental properties that he's, that he's already anticipated. Right? But this is different. In my opinion, I don't personally see, you know, Chestnut Ridge is impacted. But obviously that's why we have, you know, five members and, you know, hopefully we don't have ties. We've got four tonight. So, you know, it's just for us to kind of decide from, you know, kind of the reasonable man perspective, you know.
Yeah. What does that equal from your perspective, Matt?
Well, we don't really have a, we don't really have a comparable here because we, this is like a planned unit development, you know. Typically what we would do, as I said, most of our applications come in on Main Street and we do two to the left, two to the right. We take that same width, transfer it across the beach and say, notice all these folks. So this is going, this is really from whole cloth here. I mean, my, my gut is kind of, I don't, I don't see an impact across the street. Right? That, that would differ from the prior use. I do think that condo owners all need to understand that this development that they bought into is now changing. They may feel it's.
I think we're agreed on.
Yeah. I don't, I personally don't, I, I guess you, I guess you should maybe just notice everybody on the parcel because. There, there are also renters, right? You know. The tax, you know, the CPA that's in there that says, hey, you know, these people are going to start taking up, you know, parking that my customers might use.
Right.
Right? Because this stuff overflows. So probably the most, you know, the most. The greatest caution would be just everybody on the site, including the R one lots, right? You know, the, the private lots that are carved out of the site. Because again, those are folks that are bought in to a, a development that was approved and had these uses. And now there's this change. So I, I don't think there's any downside to basically the, you know, the, you know, everybody on the site. It's not a huge number of people to notice either. I mean, you, you know, I guess the question is, do you notice the tenant or do you notice the owner? If you're noticing the owner, it's all Butterfield anyway. So don't, so it doesn't, I don't bother. Right? Their, their Butterfield is fully aware of what's happening. So, um, but I think certainly the condominiums, I think, need to be heard. I think the R one lot should be heard. I personally, and when, in, in my position here, don't feel that there's really any change and impact to Chestnut Ridge. And, and again, when you bring people in and ask them for their input, it just kind of, you know, you, you know, it's no different than, you know, worker satisfaction studies, you know.
Okay.
We, I was just looking at the map as well of the site and. Additionally, topographically, because it's kind of. You know, uphill from. Bridge. So I think that's another reason why. I mean. Yeah, I just don't think, I think it's far away enough and then across a roadway. And then everything else across the road is commercial or a, a big percentage of what's across the street is commercial. So, and very set. So I don't know.
Sue, do you agree with that?
I, I agree. I, this is, you know, the, the, the thing is. I think if. They had gone through a lot of things during the previous process and that was already a. Site or something designated and, and everything they went through all this. So I don't think it's necessary to get the people across the street involved again. As far as the, on the property, the, the condo owners right now. They, you know, it's basically at their window. So, but they express their ideas. But however, I think based on our last meeting, the understanding was that they will notify those people. Not the people across the, the street in the Chestnut Ridge. So I agree. Don't bother with the other people. Just get what we agreed on in the previous meeting.
All right. Thank you. I also agree. So Matt, do you want to frame a resolution?
So, yeah, I'm just not clear. So are we, are we saying all the commercial properties, buildings?
We're saying anyone on the site.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So.
No commercial properties. Oh, oh, on the site. Yes.
On the site. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, let me just. Since we don't. Let me just pull up a tax map really quick. We might as well just do the, the, it's just four parcels, right? There's the three R one parcels and the, oh, you have it? Oh, great. You want to do the resolution?
No, I didn't.
All right, give it, leave, list them off to me and I'll. Because typically what we do is either with an address, but better with a tax map. Parcel, we just say notify these people and. Go ahead.
The tax map is the, the address is forty four Chestnut. Is that correct or is it forty?
Well, there's quite a few.
There, for some reason on the, on the tax map parcel, I'm looking at. Yeah, maybe if you don't mind pulling it up as well.
Let me see.
I'm on. E parcel.
On the counties?
Yeah. On a parcel, but I, I can't seem to see. Uh, there's not a lot, maybe I'm just not getting into the.
You, you, yeah, and it might not be right, actually, because I noticed that when they're, they were still. I mean, I think they have carved out the R ones. I think they did finally on the site.
I'm going to not be right.
I know that, yeah, sometimes there are little pieces of information missing, but.
Yep. For clarification, those three are ones. I mean, there's only one unit that's been.
Built.
Built. Another second one has been bought, the third.
Sold. Yeah.
It's not been sold yet.
Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, notifying the other one, the owner is Butterfield. Let me just see what I can pull up.
When the HTRB held a public hearing for the first of those are three R one lots. I don't believe they noticed all the condo tenants. They just noticed. They sent it to Butterfield and for Butterfield to post in a public place. In the condos.
I don't, I don't love that. Only because obviously our code, you know, has a very prescribed process about registered return mail. And then, you know, you have noticed that, because if you have the one person in there that says, I, I, I don't, I don't go into the common room. I didn't see this poster.
Yeah, I just assume. Do it to all of the, the owners on the site or.
Yeah. I mean, I guess what we could do, let's just, we'll just do it by, just by words. It's not, this is not that hard. Because I don't want to get the parcels wrong and I'm not, I'm not able to pull them up right now. Let me see, actually, if I have an old map.
No, no, don't, don't use an old map. Do words and we will subsequently.
Yeah. So just, just a resolution, the planning board. Designates all the parcels within the, within the boundary of the Butterfield real development site, including the three R one residential properties. That the property owners should be notified of the public hearing occurring on March tenth. And that. Do we want to also say that the tenants, that the building tenants, that would, it wouldn't be that many. I, I think it should be that the notice should go to the building, you know, with respect to the commercial properties that are leased by Butterfield Realty to commercial tenants. The notice should go to the commercial tenants. That there is, that there is a public hearing on March tenth for a change of use from the approved commercial use. To senior housing. And that they are invited to be heard.
Sounds good to me. Is there a second?
Okay.
Sue, all right. Lara, you second that and. But let's take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. It's unanimous. All right. Well, I'm not sure that we can do anything else tonight on this. And so.
But Jack, I think that since you've, since you've. Assembled the board for the purpose of conducting business and we have a resolution that that just needs to go out. John said he could notify the, the applicant as well. Just give them the, you know, what the resolution was. They, they'll look up the, you know, the tax parcels and the addresses and the mailing address. So that, because they need to get that out. So it's 10 days in advance of the hearing.
Yeah.
And that's really all, if they, if they were here to hear what we're talking about, that's all they would have. We did actually ask them though, so. You know, and hopefully they come to it with a public hearing. If not, we can probably, we could hold the public hearing open, but we did ask them for a block plan to understand. For us to look at, for us to look at the site, we need to understand, one of the questions I have is all the, you know, the handicap parking is in the rear. There's nothing towards this retail entrance. You're supposed to be inviting people. In from the front, but you're asking handicap folks to go in the back.
In the back, yeah.
Right? So I think that we need to kind of see a block plan to say, okay, there's a commercial entrance here. And there's a residential entrance here. And then we kind of understand what the, what the site plan is. Part, maybe Mike, maybe John's, you know, if, if Jack and the board are in agreement, maybe John just, you know, lets the applicant know that we need to have that for the hearing. Or could just, you know, you know, it, we need to have it for the hearing. It would be good to have it tonight and say, we are ready for the hearing, but there's no reason to believe to, to keep their March tenth hearing that they're not going to provide it. So, and they should, it would be nice if they would get it to us a few days in advance, right?
And I, I will follow up on that as well.
Okay. And then, and then we'll, because that way then we can hear the input from the public to say, because the public is going, if, if they come and if they have questions, I am sure one of their questions is going to be. Where does the public go in? Where does residential go in? You know, where do I park? You know? It would be nice to get clarity on this parking spaces. I had asked, and I know your, your feeling, Jack, was that those eight parking spaces. Were, were temporarily signed as back in only during construction. But the applicant should take a position on that. They never have, right? Right? Because it's kind of, they're, they're kind of, i- in my opinion, they're kind of restricted use spaces and that's a lot. That's eight.
Um, all right, I'll follow up on that with them as well, but I'm quite sure that that's judging by the signage and its location and. That, that's what that is.
That would be great because it's, first of all, it just seems very, a, a very strange.
It would be odd to do it, yeah.
I don't know why you'd want anybody to do it at all, even during construction, but if those go back to just normal spaces, then, you know, we know that there's not some.
Well, it may be small delivery, Matt, and so i- if they want them back in, behi- behind that classic curtain, you know, there's a gate. Um, so they just make, may want to make it easier, small delivery. Okay?
Uh, I think at last meeting, we also, uh, said. The, the questions, um. The parking go backwards and then there's some in front and then the senior area is somewhere elevated or sunk or something. I think, yeah, I think we should have the, I think Matt said that we should have the elevation map and so on, that we have a look instead of flat. And then they said, they told me, oh, you see that drawing? That's a car. So it goes through somewhere. I, I, by looking at that map, I had no idea. That's why I said, where do you go in? Where do you go out? Okay, so therefore, if they have some drawing, at least.
Elevations.
Yeah, I, I think that's what, something you mentioned because of the sunken, uh, senior area and all that stuff.
Absolutely. Without an elevation, it looked like you're setting the seniors at a picnic table at a bumper, right? But they said, oh, it's set down. I'm like, that's even better. It's actually usable outdoor space where you can have some sort of privacy and play cards or whatever.
Right.
You know, sitting at a bumper, like, you know, you're at the Chipotle, um, it's not.
Tailgating party.
Yeah. So, yeah, elevations would clear all, elevations would have. Would have eliminated your, your confusion as well, right? You would have seen that, oh, that's, you know, that's black dot.
Yeah.
Right? Not a wall.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess some site elevations, you, you're right, I do recall that. And then just that they would show us, you know, this, at least a block plan. They don't have to go to a lot of expense to show detail. And then we, the block plan was also, was going to show the, uh. A general layout of these apartments, right? And the, and the, and that they're providing the community space. The planning board really shouldn't be approving it without the community space. These rooms are.
I think they had, and they had their architects working on them.
Okay, yeah, because we really should see that these rooms are. Are important to those, to those folks to be able to, you know, especially when they get older, to be able to go and all meet, you know, especially, although these are larger apartments, Chestnut Ridge is very small apartments. And so the community space is important to them, socializing and just, you know.
Yeah. Alrighty, um.
In terms of written resolutions, which it sounds like we owe you at least one. Just wanted to. And I apologize that the filing inherited wasn't fully clear on this. Was there already a resolution scheduling the public hearing for March 10th?
Yes.
In the last penguin, okay.
Yeah, we just, we just missed the, um. We're all a little rusty. Uh, we just missed the, uh. Designating the affected properties. For a notification, which is fine because it's obviously this we're doing tonight and there's plenty of time for them to notice. They got, but they do need to get them out quick.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think they're, they're aware of.
Monday.
Yes, on Monday.
Did you want to also? Make it at least an initial resolution with respect to the secret status?
That was actually done. I mean, we, I, I don't know whether John didn't write something up, but we definitely declared, you know, a type two unlisted. And designated ourselves as the lead agency because at this point we're the only involved agency. And.
I, I don't think that, I mean, we agreed on it. I thought he was going to write a resolution for it.
I'm sure, I'll see, yeah, I'm gonna get it filed and, at least need to get it in final form and. Okay, I have a checklist.
I went back through the minutes too and, um. So yes, I, i- if he can do that, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Um, all right, moving on, uh, I just wanted to get your, uh, opinion on something. Jeff, are we now? Is. Can we decide whether we want our meetings live or Zoom or? What, what is the status with public meetings now?
The executive order by the governor has been extended until March 18th.
Okay.
So the open meeting law is suspended through March 18th. They seem to be doing it, she's doing this on a month by month basis as did.
Okay.
Governor Cuomo, so.
Okay.
She extends it for 30 days and examines it after each 30 day period. So March eight, March 18th will be the next one. My, I anticipate that it'll get extended again. I mean, at some point it'll probably get addressed and rewritten, but.
Okay. And then, uh, the next item is, we've already had one applicant for. Our. Position of alternate. Board member. Um, and I. I would like at our next meeting to have some discussion about in general, what you all think. Are the qualities that we should be looking for? In an alternate board member, so that, um. When we begin to get, if we do serious interest. We have some sort of standard against which we can, you know, sort of judge people's. Qualification. So if you would think about that, uh, I'm thinking of this alternate board member as a board member in training. There is no guarantee of that. You know, the trustees will decide, but the trustees decide, but I think. Um, having someone who is, uh. Aware of. All of our actions. And who can fill in, but at some point, uh, you know, I'm old. Think, you know, the configuration of the board will change and so, um. I, I would be really interested to hear, and again, I'm, I'm speaking from this point of view that there are some big issues out there. Um, that we're going to need to, as I think, my opinion is that we are going to need to, as a board. Begin to start particularly since. You know, anyway, um. So there is no new business, there is no correspondence, right? Um, and so could I have a resolution to, um, adjourn?
I'm pushing to adjourn.
Thank you. And a second please.
I can.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I unanimous. So, uh, thank you, Michael. And, uh, thank you for filling in, um, much appreciated, okay?
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right, have a good night. And Matt, Matt, take, take a scroll down to Doc's side, please.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'd actually, I'd like to see, but I, I'll, I'll definitely look at the plans. That'll, that usually tells me a lot more than what the site does. But I'll take a look. But yeah, it sounds like, sounds like concrete piles, foundations, but.
Hey, I just don't know what this machine is.
Yeah, and I'm also interested, it'd be interesting, especially if we've been given this authority to kind of look at what the. You know, what the easement rights are, you know, that's, that's through the Bergman property. I had thought it was not, was, was no vehicular traffic, certainly access for maintenance, no different than like Sina Hudson, you, there are access roads. They're, they are not meant to be driven on. They are not public roads. Um, that's a very different use and it's typically the easement holder that determines that. So. It'd be interesting to know what the state of that is, but you know, when you're dealing with the state and these things, it's, um. You know, you're going to kind of get the information that you get and, um. But to the extent that you can at least make them aware, I mean, I always feel better. Stating my mind, you know, even if it has absolutely no impact. Because, you know, that's the way I sleep at night.
But I think it does, I, I think it does have an impact, even if it doesn't. Necessarily result in. You know, an immediate, uh, change, uh, it does have an impact. So I agree with you.
Very good.
All right, thanks a lot. Good night.